Good evening, and thank you for attending the Tuesday, June 18th, 2019 City Council Meeting. If you could please stand for the flag.
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
Mayor Falendorf?
Here.
Vice Mayor Olivera?
Present.
Councilmember Herman?
Here.
Councilmember Matilde?
Here.
Councilmember Brolio?
Present.
Present, and we have the floor. In front of us, we all have an agenda. Is there any, did the council have any changes they wish to make to the agenda?
Right here.
Public comment? Motion on the table to approve the agenda?
Mayor Falendorf, I would like to recommend one change.
Okay.
Consideration of moving item C before the budget hearing. Or, let's see, what was I supposed to do? Yeah. Or, item C, because it could have a budgetary impact. So, we would request your direction with the approval of the budget to include item C.
Under what?
Um, I'm sorry, under the regular, 7C.
The regular agenda?
7C. 7C.
Yes.
We move it?
Uh, move it above the public hearing.
Okay.
For the budget, item 7B.
Is there a motion to approve the amended agenda?
So moved.
Same.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next is, um, public comment. Is there any public comment, um, for any items not on the current agenda?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. My name is Debbie Ponte with Destination Angels Camp. And I just want to give the council a heads up that there's a lot of activity going on in regards to infrastructure on curb gutter sidewalks throughout town. We, on Friday, will be meeting with landowners adjacent to the project area from Capello Drive to 449, and having one-to-one meetings with landowners. And then we'll be down at Utica Park. Because I understand the farmer's market is so much fun, we've been missing the activity, so we decided to have a booth down there and do further public outreach on this particular project. Following that, over the next two weeks, we'll be meeting with other property owners from the other side of 449, all the way down to Brad Street Catholic Church, talking about curb gutter sidewalk project. We're in the engineering and design phase for that project. Second project during this next two weeks will be Murphy's Grade Road, which is a curb gutter sidewalk from the entrance of Capello, or, excuse me, not Capello, Bicorne Mobile Home Park, all the way down to the playing fields, ballfields of Bret Hart High School, both sides of Murphy's Grade Road. All of these projects currently are in either the city or Caltrans right away. We're not looking at any private property acquisition, but the reason we are talking to property owners is so that they're aware of the project, offer their, seek their input on what the project may look like in front of their business land. And also make sure that, as we get to the public meeting process, we've been able to get enough input to design these projects as to how we would like to see them in our city. The fourth project we're working on is additional outreach. We have the Angels Creek Trail. The plan was approved several years ago. We now have funding in our pocket to look at design of this particular project, starting at Tryon Park to the bridge down here at the corner of 49 and Vallecito Road, taking a look at what that trail would look like and what we would like Tryon Park to look like. And we're looking at the Tryon Park in conjunction with what Amy's doing on another grant in regards to all of our parks and how we can best facilitate good use of all of our parks, utilizing the maximum availability of our funds. Phase two of the Angels Creek project, we'll take a look going down Finnegan Lane, and then phase three is out to the lake. But that's a few years down the line. Our project funding right now is for design and engineering on phase one and phase two. And we'll be meeting with the neighborhoods and having a variety of community meetings at large, soliciting information on what this trail could look like and what we want our Tryon Park to look like when it's all said and done. So, lots of activities. So, if you see engineers and surveyors along the route, that's what's happening. And we'll have additional community input. I'll work with Susan to make sure it gets on your calendars, because we'd like to have the participation of our city council representatives, as well as our planning commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. Is there any other public comment for items not on the agenda? Okay, moving on. Earlier tonight, we had closed session, and there were three items on the agenda for closed session. And each of those items, direction was given to staff and no reportable action. Next is interview and reappointment of planning commissioner. Okay. So who, so we have a seat, who's going to do the presentation?
Turn it over to Amy.
Amy?
That's an introduction, Amy.
Madam Mayor, council members, I would just like to introduce our expert architectural person on our planning commission, Gary Gordon, who's basically been helping us along for many, many years, and we hope he can continue helping us along. And, just putting in, while I have the microphone, we still have a vacancy left, so anybody who would like to apply, you may get an application through City Hall. Is there, are they also online?
Um, I think it is.
And online, so. With no further ado, Gary, you take it away.
I know. This is the opportunity for the council to ask questions.
Is there any council question?
I'd just like to thank you, Gary, for your interest in us again.
Well, I appreciate it very much. I'd like to say, I sit on six boards. That's what happens when you're retired. And I keep thinking I should retire from volunteering and go back to work full-time. I really thoroughly enjoy this. Of all of the boards that I'm on, this is the one I probably get one of the greatest feelings of accomplishment, because I like Angels Camp very much. And I think the city has such potential that most cities in California would be very, very pleased to have what this city offers. Location, the creek, historic downtown museum. Uh, those are tremendous draws, and it's something that we all need to be working together on to preserve and to keep the rural appearance of Angels Camp. And I talk to a lot of tourists coming through as I walk my little white dog, we need to see that all the time. And people are astounded about how nice Angels Camp is, when I, they've never been here before, and they say, "What a charming town." And that always makes me feel good that I'm on the planning commission board, that, you know, you can take that back and say what people do like, or any comments that you hear on the opposite side. And, uh, my other two that I like, my other two boards are cemetery boards, and no one gives me any problem there. So, those are my comments. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Do we need to do anything?
I would ask that you make a motion?
Okay.
To reappoint Commissioner Gordon to another three-year term.
I'll make a motion to appoint Mr. Gordon to the three-year term.
I'll second it.
Then to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. There are four items, A, B, D, on the consent agenda. Is there any public comment on the consent agenda? Okay, is there any council comment on the consent agenda?
Would you like to pull D for a question?
Any other?
No.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve A, B, and G?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Was Linda the second on that?
Yes. Thank you.
I don't see anybody here from public work, so I guess I'll ask you, Melissa. What I was looking for was the cause of that failure. You know, it says it failed. Did somebody poke a hole in it? Did it?
So, from what I recall from the guise, this is happening during budget hearings, that it was along a similar location where we'd had previous breaks. They didn't know if it was a result of the rocky soil in which the pipe was laid, or if it was a water hammer from valve shut-offs on the Greenhorn Creek side that caused the blowout. So, the engineer was out there taking pictures, but either way, they had to immediately repair the line, which happened right away. I think it was on a Friday. They had somebody out there on Saturday. And then, um, they are talking with Greenhorn Creek maintenance staff in the event that they shut off valves and it was, I think they call it a water hammer. Um, that there's some training involved and some coordination with our staff that prevents things like that, if that were the case. But at the time, those were the two options they gave me.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Any public question? Okay, is there a motion to approve consent item D?
I'm moved to approve consent D.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving on to the regular agenda. Item A, public hearing. This is the second public hearing for Resolution 1915, updating business license fees. Emily?
Hello. So, we have... So, most of this presentation was already presented at the first public hearing on June the 6th. We have made some adjustments to it, as requested from the public and from council. And so, we will just go over most of those changes that we've made since then.
Just a couple seconds left.
Pretty hot out there, huh?
Amy?
Yes.
That'll, that'll do it. Sorry, I just pulled the key. There we go. Something's happening now. There we go, okay. Okay, so first I want to talk about business license fees. Uh, so, I already talked about how in 1912, they were $20, and we haven't, we last had our update in 1991. And our current fees are shown there. So, I am proposing a renewal fee of an average of the current ones, just one flat rate, no categories, just keep it really simple. And that would be a $65. So, several categories would go down, and a couple categories would see a slight increase. And so, these are the same costs that I presented in the first public hearing, so these would only apply for new business licenses. And I've provided definitions on every category for those new business licenses. They are all cost-driven categories. So, a contractor, you have to have a contractor's license, and this helps ensure if you're hiring a contractor in the city of Angels, you know your contractor has a valid license. Also, some added consumer assurance. For a storefront is a non-residence location. The secondhand dealer and the locksmith are both defined by state laws, which are required to be registered with the Department of Justice, and one is the Department of, um, I'm sorry, it's the Bureau of Security and Investigative Services, excuse me. And then the last one is a general, which is if you do not fall in any of those other categories, then it would all be general. So, the next thing that I do want to talk about is the fire code, which I have our fire marshal on standby right here to talk further about it, as he is the one who briefed me about this. We are required to do annual inspections of certain types of businesses, and these types of businesses are defined in the California Code of Regulations. And some of those include hotels, motels, an assembly, assisted care facility, any facility with a fire suppression system, and you can see some others. They're all defined in the California code. And the cost of this inspection will be approximately $65. So, we're proposing that for those businesses that we inspect, we pass that cost on to those. And that would include an annual inspection by our fire marshal, along with one reinspection. And then, um, would you like to talk further about that, or I can?
Sure.
Yeah.
So, I apologize, I wasn't at the last meeting. I missed some of the conversation. But, um, like Emily spoke on, under Title 19 and Title 24, California Code of Regulations requires certain businesses to be, have a mandated fire and life safety inspection annually. If you remember back, prior to last budget, we talked to the council about some of the liabilities incurred with reduction in staff at the fire department level, and some of those inspections, fire life safety inspections, weren't being accomplished. Since last year's budget, when we revamped the fire department, added some staff, allowed me time to do those inspections, we're back on schedule of conducting those mandatory fire life safety inspections. Currently, every new business that has a storefront, I go into and do a fire life safety inspection, and then the ones that are mandated by the state, I'm able to get into. Majority of those are either high life safety concern, or high property value concern, or high merchandise concern. It's a, it's meant to be a cooperative effort between, um, the city and the business, because we want to keep them in business, and we want to make sure they're in safe practices to maintain and operate their business safely and stay in business. And we also don't want to have to be out there putting out their merchandise for their building. So, that's the reason for us doing these fire life safety inspections, and I'd be happy to answer any questions about that.
What was the fee structure, again, for this kind of inspection?
It was just $65, and you get the one annual, your annual inspection, and then assuming, usually there might be a small, there might be a small thing that Nathan would have to go back and re, do a reinspection for, it would include that too. And so, this would be the total, um, fee, proposed fee. So, you see, the new ones are the top with the categories, business license renewal, that flat $65, and then if you're also getting your annual fire marshal inspection, it would be an added $65, which would go into the cost of Nathan's inspections, into the fire budget.
So, you see, you average this out, because obviously it takes longer to do a hotel than it does something else?
Exactly.
So, you looked at all the businesses in town, and you just choose to do it on an average basis?
The ones that are mandated inspections, hotels, assemblies, education, those average out to about an hour apiece for me to go and do an initial inspection on. The reinspection, we've kind of thrown in there, we have in charge for, because it's about an hour, which is about, that's what we're passing on, is just that, the staff time to go out and do that. The reinspection, most, 98% are going to require a reinspection. There's something that is found that needs to go be back and checked on, and generally those are pretty quick. The problem is corrected, the violation's corrected, go off and sign that off. If it's not, then it would require an additional inspection.
Can you bill for that?
Probably would, yeah. It's up to administration, but...
Okay.
Um, that's all I have.
So, the six, I got one question. So, the $65 renewal fee, when we were talking about, does that cover, because we didn't know what a renewal consisted of?
Yeah.
So, what does that $65 cover? Because, for the most part, if you're a general contractor, there's not much to do as a renewal fee, that you're not running a contractor's license number, you're not doing anything for $65.
It's the, yeah, it's just the processing and administration of the, of processing the renewals.
And how many new licenses each year are coming, how to get?
I did have that number. Yeah. I was, I had 44, and so, I think about 40...
Rough number for new businesses a year?
Yeah. Any questions?
Okay. And the second part of this will deal with the master fee schedule, which basically, we didn't have a huge number of questions on at the last meeting. There were very few changes made to it. We added, come on, brain, the parking in lieu fee, which we hadn't had on there. It's not a new fee, it's just something we passed recently, and we're trying to make the fee schedule very complete so that nobody gets surprised when a fee comes up. The thing that we did have lots of questions about was the affordable housing fees, and we were asked to go back and see if we could cut more out of those fees. So, basically, finance director and the city engineer and I sat down and talked about the sewer fee to see if we could reduce it any further, and the answer was yes, that we will in fact be able to use a fee of $6,958 per unit for extremely low, very low, low, and moderate income multifamily. That's a discount of $2,300 for each unit. And the reason for that is basically, they tend to have slightly lower use, and also the infrastructure you have, it's all sort of concentrated in one area, and you don't have a whole, an individual pipe every few feet that you have to deal with. So, the city engineer felt very comfortable with that, and we felt that the existing fee structures would not be impacted by that. Single-family residential, the best we were able to do was a $580 per unit decrease, which reduced it from $92.77 to $86.97. We basically made it the same as a mobile home. And again, the city engineer and the finance director felt that that would not adversely impact our overall ability to do capital improvements. So, what that means... So, basically, what this means is that, whereas previously, we had in the range of 41% to 47% mitigation fee reduction for single-family, we now have in the range of 43% to just short of 50% reduction in fees for single-family, and for multifamily, it's over 50%. It's basically 51% to 54% reduction in overall fees for the entire, our big three, as we call them, traffic, water, and sewer. We have had some discussions, and I have heard from some of the people that we heard from last time, and they would still like to see them reduced further. As well as, it was called to my attention that we will be doing a specific plan for one portion of the city, and they will have what's called a benefit assessment district, basically. So, any new improvements that they have to have, they may come under somewhat different fee structure. So, in your resolution, we are asking that it be amended slightly, so that instead of saying, "City Council directs staff to include consideration," and I'm talking about Resolution 19-17, the very last line of it asks that staff, directs staff to include consideration of the effects of, and potential for reducing or waiving impact mitigation fees for affordable housing and future capital improvement financing plans and studies, including specific plans. In addition, because it's going to come up, I just wanted to give you some background, but there were some suggestions that perhaps with sewer impact mitigation fees, that there be some consideration for extremely low-income housing, where you can only charge, say, $500 a month, that further reductions in that fee be considered. If you were to, it would cost for the 29 units of extremely low-income housing that we are required to have through 2027, it would be in the ballpark of $200,000. You would be losing in revenue to the sewer fund. So, should that come up, there's your background as to what kind of income you would be waiving if you were to consider that. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the council?
Single-family for rough numbers was, as it is today, traffic is $9,000, water is $9,000, sewer is $9,000. So, it's $27,000, and what are we going to take that as, three biggie, the bigs, too?
Uh, for a single-family, we're going to take it, instead of from going, right now, you're in the range of $30,600 minus school fees?
Yep.
We're going to take that down to $15,479.
So, you're cutting that by half?
We're cutting it by half. It goes up to 17 for moderate, but it's $15,000 for extremely low. And then for multifamily, it's currently in the range of $25,000 to $26,000 per unit in a multifamily unit, and we'd be taking that down to $11,700 to roughly 13. So, again, that's slightly more than half on the multifamily, which is consistent with affordable housing. At the lowest level, you tend to have more multifamily.
Any other questions?
Right here.
So... Do you want me to open public hearing now, and then do the, if there are any questions from the council at this point?
Yep, I want to comment.
Are you guys good?
Okay. Yeah.
Public hearing, open.
My name is Scott B. Hill. I'm here on behalf of Habitat for Humanity, and I'm also Angels Camp resident. I really, I want to thank you for sharpening your pencils on this. I know it's not easy. I don't know what the right numbers are, but I do know that if we want affordable housing in the city, we need to do everything we can to make it affordable. The, what Amy was just alluding to, on the very low income, there's a distinction that has to be made. We have very low income, and we have low income, and then we have, what, moderate income, and, you know, and each one is a jump in pay. The way Habitat works is we will never charge somebody more than 30% of their income. So, when we sell somebody a house, regardless of how much it's worth, they won't pay more than 30% of their income in mortgage, and that has to include property taxes and homeowner association dues. So, when it comes to the very low income, or extremely low income, sorry, there's extreme, very, and then low, yeah. We're talking about trying to put people in houses for $400 or $500 a month, and that's equity building. That's ownership, that's not rent. So, that's the part that I'm struggling with. What I would like to do is to come up and check all the boxes on the housing element. I think that'd be really cool. I really want to provide this low-income housing, these 29 units, if we can do it. But that's the most, the biggest challenge for us, the least, the less we can accept from the homeowner, the more we have to subsidize the building. from the homeowner, the more we have to subsidize the building. So if, we're trying to decide whether or not we can accomplish the very low, or extremely low-income buildings. And the extra $15,000 bucks that's on here, that's remaining, is a big, big deal for us. So the city needs to decide, do you want housing for extremely low-income people? Give them a chance at homeownership, as opposed to Section Eight renting, build some pride of ownership. Do we want to do that? And really, it's going to come down to, we need you to waive the water, the sewer and the traffic. And as Amy said, that's about a $200,000 hit, but what you'll get in return, in my opinion, is far greater than that. You'll get twenty-nine units of people who have pride of ownership, of people who will support the community through sales taxes. Typically, a very low-income household holder are one, sometimes two people, so you don't have a huge impact on the sewer and the water or the traffic, because everybody's income in a household has to be used to qualify. And if it puts them up or into the next level, they don't qualify. So anyway, the least impact possible as far as families go or individuals, and the $15,000 a unit, it's a big deal. It's cash out of our pocket through donations, and we're going to have some grants, but we're going to have to subsidize these units heavily. So every little bit helps a whole bunch. So again, it's up to, it's up to you. If you guys want this available, it's something we're willing, we're willing to work really hard to make happen. But without the added discounts, you're probably just going to see the low-income people served and the moderate-income people served, and not the extremely low-income. Okay, thank you.
Scott, follow-up question?
Yep.
The extremely low thing that we're talking about here, are we talking about minimum wage, folks? Or are we talking about something greater than that?
We're talking about below that. We're talking about people that are making probably fifteen to $20,000 a year. So I guess that's right, that's real close to that, but a lot of them are on Social Security, you know, maybe some veterans benefits or something like that. But it's, you're, you know, minimum wage, when you get, start getting up at around the $15 an hour range, you start getting into the lower income. But these are most, I think they're mostly going to be senior citizens, quite frankly.
And how many units are you thinking of in this?
The housing element is asking for twenty-nine. That's the requirement, that's the unmet need right now. And so we would build twenty-nine.
And what's your assessment of the demand for that realistically?
I think that's in line with, I've read a lot lately on the county housing elements and the, and the demand there. I think it's in line with, with what people are predicting. I don't know, you know, where they came up with the numbers and where they got that guideline. That might be a question better for Amy.
Do you have, I guess, similar projects elsewhere where things have gone through and the numbers have proven out that, you know, we thought it was twenty-nine, but the demand was greater than that, and they're basically going to call it a success?
The closest one I can think of is in Sonora, on Parrot's Ferry, there's a Habitat development there. And to give you an idea of demand, every six months, they try to release two units and they put out applications. They usually get thirty applications, ten of which are solid. When I say solid, those aren't for the extremely low income, those are, those are people that are making, it works best for us, and like, we can do more good if people are making between fifty and seventy thousand a year, because they can afford to pay more, they can make, they can afford to pay us enough to build the house. But for the lower income, I'm sorry, I'll back up. They get thirty applications, ten of which they say are solid, and they choose two. So there's a large demand for these, this type of housing. And it's not going away, it's just getting stronger and stronger. So I think though, right now, just to give us a number, if we can, again, check the boxes on the housing element, let's put twenty-nine of these units out there and see what we can do. And that's, you know, it's up, it's up to you guys. We're going, we'll do our part. You know, we're going to be hitting the state of California up for some grant money to do their part, and we're asking the city to dig down and, you know, do your part. And again, it's your decision if you want it or not.
So are you saying waiving the fifteen thousand?
Waiving the big three, yeah. The water, the sewer and the traffic mitigation.
On just the twenty-nine, correct?
On the very, yeah, for the extremely low-income housing.
And then how many more after that would come in the moderate?
We're going to build as few houses for the extremely low-income as we can, but still, we would like to help out and, and we're trying to check that box, right?
Right.
We don't need to do that for our purposes.
So we're waiving the fee for twenty-nine?
That's what I'm asking for.
And then how many more past that would you build, of the next step up into the moderate or?
We're looking, right now, the, our best...
Where we would be charging you fees upon those homes.
Right. So right now, our best guess is I'd like to put between eighty and a hundred units that are affordable housing on that property. And then the, the rest of the, that can be done on maybe half or even less than half of that property. The rest of it will have to sell off to for-profit developers to build other housing. And it can be high-density, they can build apartments there, they can, they can do some commercial, whatever they, whatever they want to do. But for Habitat, my goal's a hundred. I'd love to see a hundred houses built. A lot more, better chance of that happening if we're not doing extremely low-income, honest with you, because it'd be, money can be spilt out, spent elsewhere.
Right. Does fifteen thousand for all three of those put us in the range of any other cities and municipalities? Are they waiving?
A lot of cities and counties find it beneficial to waive all fees for affordable housing. So cutting it in half is, is one thing, but it's not unusual to see counties and municipalities waive all the fees for affordable housing. Habitat does it all over the world.
For the twenty-nine, though, we would be $200,000 less than we could, we're receiving $200,000 if we kept the fifteen thousand, is what you're saying. Is that right?
Well, I think it's, I think the number's with seven, more than seven thousand, based on what we're at. We're already at seven thousand on the sewer, the water's already waived. So I guess it'd be about ten thousand, I'm asking for eleven thousand a unit. I think Amy only mentioned sewer. I'm mentioning traffic, too.
That number I gave you was only for sewer.
Well, you, you mentioned traffic. You wanted that, you wanted that waived, too.
I wanted the big three to go to zero, four, just for those people, so that we can put people in the houses that...
Was that in the two-hundred thousand, Amy, that you projected? So that's an additional...
Yes, the two-hundred thousand, yeah.
That only, the two-hundred thousand includes only twenty-nine units of extremely low housing sewer.
Sewer only.
Sewer only. So we need to consider, if you want traffic mitigation waived, that's another...
That's about three-hundred thousand, then. I think average, average ten, when you combine the two?
All right. If you did five on, five thousand for traffic, five thousand for water, five thousand for sewer, times twenty-nine is $435,000.
So it would be my recommendation that if we're going to do something significantly different than what's presented tonight, because of the significance of the numbers that we're talking about, that we bring it back as a different agenda is that, because I don't think that carving out three-hundred thousand dollars, because this, this has an impact, let's be very candid, when you don't make people pay for connections, that means that new development that come in has to pay, has to pay for that. So we have to figure out what that does to the capacity, and what that would shove up the, the impact fees to developers that would be coming in on, as well as for the low impact. But I don't think this is something we can do at the dais we're going to go.
So if we vote this in, if we vote this in tonight for the fifty percent reduction for the low income?
Does that mean you can't revisit it?
Can he revisit, can he come back and revisit it and we can readjust again in two weeks?
Maybe not two weeks.
I'm just saying, because these guys are, all these guys that are sitting here tonight, they're on a time-sensitive thing. They want to get building and moving, too. So at least this is a start by fifty percent and a half, if that makes sense. Can they come in and do more negotiations and sit and do? Or is this a final thing here?
So, and I think that the most time-sensitive thing of Habitat, for Habitat, would be to do a one-project, one-hundred-couple-house op, you know, one-off, so that we have the time to kind of study the implications, that it would have to the fee schedule for redevelopment and capacity. And then you get what you want in the short term while developing and while, so if there's a...
We're going to do a study for property tax that we know will be there?
No, no, it's about capacity. So if you throw ninety-nine homes into a sewer plant, as an example...
Right.
You're going to have, you're going to have less capacity than you have currently budgeted. Your connection fees are based off of recuperating a certain amount for each thing the capacity comes in. So what happens is, you've got to take into account the ninety-nine new connections, figure out how, how much money that you were supposed to otherwise have gotten, and you have to adjust your fees up to account for that. I mean, at the end of the day, somebody always pays for it. Right? I mean, there is no, it's not free.
Right.
No, it's my, it's my understanding that our, other than the pipe-dotted booster, that our sewer capacity can handle everything we're talking about tonight and then some.
So it's not a, whether or not your sewer capacity, we have enough sewer capacity to handle it, it's not a capacity issue. It's what do you have to charge on a capacity rate going forward if you put a hundred, ninety-nine homes on there without any connection fee? So in other words, it's all predicated on a financial structure that now ninety-nine homes are, are paying nothing for.
I tell you what, it's ninety-nine more people paying dues every month, premiums every month, or whatever you want, fees every month. And that's, that's what's hurt us, is we're trying to carry this entire system on seventeen-hundred households. We need the, we need the growth, we've got to grow our way out of these, these problems. So, you know, again, it's, it's something that I want to work, I very much want to work with the city to check the boxes on the housing element. I don't know of any cities that meet their housing element needs. I think there's unmet needs in every city in the state. I think it'd be really cool, we have the opportunity to meet ours. But I'm telling you, right now, if we're going to charge somebody five hundred bucks a month or four hundred bucks a month, and that's going to include taxes and homeowners' dues and, and homeowners' insurance, we're, we're not going to be able to put out, you know, another ten, fifteen thousand in fees. I guess we're talking about, we're only talking about ten, not, not the fifteen, because you're already coming down that five. So it's about three-hundred dollar, three-hundred thousand dollar tag. And it's a decision, it's got to be a decision made on a higher level. Do we want to try and provide extremely low-income housing in our city? It is part of the housing element. I don't know what that means as far as state mandates and requirements, but it is something we need to do. And I'm here to tell you, if, if, I'm in a situation where we got free land, we don't need to make a profit, we're willing to subsidize the, the units. If we can't do it, I don't think anybody can. If you're trying to make a profit and you've got to pay for the land, and you don't have the money to come out, you know, you're not borrowing from Peter to pay Paul, like we're going to be doing that on that thing, this is your best shot. So...
So, so again, my thing has nothing to do with, I think what the project they're trying to do is great, so it's not about that, it's about what I think, how significantly we can change what's being presented to you tonight from the...
How do other cities, how do other cities do it? How do the counties do it? How do they waive their fees for affordable housing?
Yeah, I mean, it's usually done through a development agreement. So we would go through a development agreement on a project, and it'd be the fee waiver in. But then it would, again, you'd have to go back and do your capacity study, you know, because again, you're predicated on getting a certain amount of money, and so then that has to then be recalculated, so that it's spread off against whoever comes thereafter.
So isn't one of the, one of the ideas here tonight is to try to make this uniform, so it applies equally to everybody? And you're telling me, so if it's a development agreement, that, that, am I getting it wrong? Or is that making it more dependent on the project and negotiating with each individual developer? Is that what we want to do, or are we trying to make it uniform? I'm not sure.
So this, this would make it uniform. A development agreement would be a one-op project-specific, you know, contractual arrangement. The difference would be, and all I'm saying tonight is, based off of what's presented here tonight, I don't know that we can modify it to what you're asking on the dais, you know.
Is that a legal issue, is that a legal issue or a financial issue?
It's both, it's both. I mean, I just don't know that I can rewrite it here on the dais.
Come back.
So if we make this, what is here tonight? We are reducing fees for all developers out here. Then they can come as a developer contract individually to the city.
Or as, or as a project together.
Or as a, okay, as a, they can negotiate then down, too.
Yes.
So there is still negotiating room on the table there.
Oh, there's nothing to negotiate.
Because I want, I want building to happen at Angels Camp. I think housing is a wonderful thing and needed very much. But to tackle it all one night, like you're saying, tonight, at least this is a start. And then you guys, developers, can come to the city and quickly, you know.
I just don't know that I can legally rewrite this tonight in such a way to meet what he's, he's asking for. It has nothing to do with the merit of what he's asking for, it's more about the practical function of...
And if we let it die tonight, or is there...
No, I mean, I mean, there's nothing wrong with passing it. It's a, it's a, it's a, it's a resolution, so it goes into effect. So, I mean, it's possible we can come back. Two weeks sounds really quickly, but I think about like a month for now.
There's nothing on it, I mean...
So passing it, passing it as is and then coming back to renegotiate some of the other...
So maybe I'm at a little bit of a loss?
So I think, Amy, overall, because if we set this, we're then setting precedent for what is going to happen after. So with what we negotiated and worked out from the first public hearing to just get to this, so we have something on paper that when somebody goes to Amy's office, that she can adequately show them these fees. Now, separate project, individual project, can we then negotiate these, if we adopt these rates, these rates lower?
I think we can.
And consider these options of free waivers under certain circumstances, meaning that they're meeting a housing element that the city wants, or, because the other fear I have is if we start, if we adopt this free waiver without any sideboard, what then does our housing and development look like in the city? What have we, have we done something that we, an unintended consequence that we haven't further studied on what, what does that mean by affordable housing? Because that spectrum is so far, affordable housing is workforce housing, it's low, extreme low.
There's a whole...
What does this mean? And so I'm hesitant, I feel like this is a two-step process at this point.
I guess, to me, what makes sense a little bit is, is, again, the motivation here is to check the boxes on the housing element. So perhaps something can be drawn where if there's an unmet need in the housing element, then the fee waivers would apply. I don't know. That's for smart people, like you guys figure out. I don't know.
But given the amount of reductions that we've done on this, can we legally pass this? Bring it back to do the negotiation with each development or project? Because right now, we've got three in the room that we need to get going, but we have nothing to base it on to even negotiate from that point on. So we've got to settle on some numbers before we can even get to the next step on what each individual project is going to be, because you've got a nonprofit, you've got profit, you've got, you know, multi, each one is unique in its own way that we have, we don't even have a baseline to start with.
Right. And the council needs to be aware, too, there is a cost in waiting. There really is. When you're a developer and you're trying to make your plans, every time, anytime you have to wait and wonder what the council's going to do, or wonder what the city's going to do, it delays the plan, it delays the project. And in some cases where, a couple of these gentlemen don't have, they're escrows, the very ownership of the land is dependent on, on what they're doing here. By delaying, could very well make a seller nervous, seller backs out, and all of a sudden, there goes the whole opportunity for a project. So delaying does have potential costs, although I don't want you to rush through and do anything that's going to...
Melissa, do you have anything to add to that?
Well, I would just like Amy to come back and kind of give us her recommendation. I know that the previous conversation we had, we talked about the development agreements, the pros and cons of the development agreements. And then I think also, Amy, you are aware of the request to move the dial a little bit more in staff recommendation as such. And then I, too, am concerned about the financial analysis and the financial impact, and then also the unintended consequences of what does this really do in terms of development of a city long-term? So any of those questions you can answer.
The simplest way to describe this is what is in front of you today is what reductions you can give without impacting other fee payers and other developers. If you go beyond this, we have not done an analysis to see how that may or may not increase the cost on others, and our goal here was not to do that. Once you step over that line, you, you're not going to have a secret exemption, you're going to have a big study you've got to do, you're going to have to spend some money, you're going to have to look at the overall impacts on all of the rate payers. What you have in front of you now is the quickest thing we could do, the furthest we could pare it down as quickly as we could without having to do special studies. And...
Amy, is that the justification for that, based on the idea of the city going after reimbursable grants? Using the grants and those costs to then offset the reductions?
Not, not for sewer. It is only, that is only the case for water reductions?
That's still on the table from when we talked last, the water still depends on the grant funds?
The water still depends on the grant funds. And the sewer would have to depend on a whole bunch of grant funds, I think that would be the most appropriate way to say that, as well as a rate study. So basically, again, what's in front of you is something we had to be able to justify it and be able to show why that additional, how we were not going to put the burden on others by reducing the cost for these affordable... others by reducing the costs for these affordable housing projects. Anything beyond that, right now you have two options, you're taking it out of your own pocket, or you're going to put it on rate payers. Anything further than that, we would have to do a more detailed analysis, and we would probably trigger SEQA.
So, when you do a development agreement, let's say Habitat, say we pass this as-is, and Habitat approaches us with a development agreement that further seeks, you know, more relief on these fees, that puts in motion all the studies you just described, right? Because we still have the same issue.
Correct.
How do we overlay that cost across the rate base?
Well, and I'm going to defer to the city attorney, because basically, I have always used development agreements not to reduce rates. The only way I've ever been able to reduce a rate is to do the study that shows how you're going to still pay for things while reducing the rate. It's not a magic fix to say, oh, we're going to do a development agreement. That just happens to be a way you can hold, you can establish sideboards, if you will, you can keep things in a managed.
Negotiate rates outside the public race, through that process.
Correct.
Yes, but again, you are.
In exchange for other public benefits.
Or other public benefits.
Meaning the housing element would be, for instance, a public benefit.
Or if Scott, when he tears up that front, he puts in the water main for us, or upsizes that water main then, while he's doing, I mean, can you do a give-take like that also?
Yeah.
Or he puts in a park out there that offsets?
Park fees, that's already in the mix, they can already do that. There are, we already have provisions for reimbursements for various types of projects. So we do have additional incentives and density bonuses, reduced parking. These are not the only incentives we have that all of these projects would get. We do have a whole laundry list that's in our density bonus ordinance, so it's not just monetary, it's also smaller lots we're giving them. Long list of development standards that they can modify when they do affordable housing. So it's sort of a whole package.
Okay. Let's see, other public comment?
Yeah, another public comment? Yeah. Any more question for the council before I go back to public comment?
Yes.
Okay, back to public comment.
Okay.
Yep.
Those density bonuses and the other things that Amy was talking about, they are available and negotiable whether you're doing the extremely low income or not. They can be just for low income, or very low income. So again, the question, the overriding question of the whole thing is, do you want us to try to check that box on the housing element? There must have been some studies already that put the box on there, or put the 29 units in there, I don't think they, or maybe they do, maybe they throw numbers on the, in the chart just to make you do more studies. I don't know. But we study things to death, and we never, we don't do stuff. We study stuff, we don't do stuff. Let's do stuff.
Good evening, my name's John Allen with John Allen Construction. We have a 36-unit proposed project on Murphy's Grade Road. So it would be a little different than Scott's, it would be probably low, it wouldn't be very low. So, what we're asking for, see, there's just a lot of ifs, so, we're asking for, well, a little bigger reduction than we're going to get, because I think we're going to have trouble making these numbers work, you know? We were hoping for that sewer fee to be cut a little bit more than it was, and we also didn't touch on the traffic fee, which I thought we had a little room on, we haven't touched on that tonight. But, going over this project, like he said, as a, you know, for-profit or whatever, myself and Mike back here, we both have properties in escrow. So looking at this fee, there's just so many ifs for us to go by what becomes an essentially worthless piece of property. If the city, you know, decides to go one way or the other, we kind of need some type of guarantees. You know, we're looking at the water fee, if the grant comes through, the 9,000's waived there. If it doesn't, we're stuck. The sewer, more grant fees, it may come, it may not. And those are huge deals on that many units, it's a make-or-break deal. So, for us, my property's been in escrow for a year and a half, so I kind of need some answers of where these numbers are going to be. I don't have time to extend the escrow and extend the escrow, and then go into a development agreement, which from the very beginning we were told we weren't going to do. So, I mean, we just kind of need some hard numbers, otherwise, you know, these are projects like shovel-ready projects that could happen within a year or two, or two, I think these two projects are. And so we kind of, to keep doing studies and just prolonging it, you know, they're going to go, they got to go somewhere else. So, as long as you guys kind of know the dire state it's in, we just kind of need some solid answers, and it doesn't seem like we're really getting there. So, thank you, I appreciate it.
Hello, council, good to see you again. My name is Michael McCullough, I'm here to talk about 395 Highway 4. It's another high-density piece of property that the city, I understand, would like to see developed. What we're looking at, and this is a great start, so thank you for consideration on this. As John mentioned, when you start looking at costs, and you can all be aware of this, I mean, there's projects that have not gotten off the ground here in California, Angels Camp hasn't had a lot of building. The reality is, we live in California, housing costs are high, and they're high because labor and materials are at all times highs, those aren't going down. Interest rates are very attractive right now, so it is kind of time to act on this to get housing started and built. So, it is kind of a nice influx, or an influx at this point, where you have an opportunity to get affordable housing built. What we're asking for, I guess, is some consideration for that, because if you start looking at a blank piece of property and adding infrastructure to that property, those costs are so high, and then on top of that, you're adding a per-door or per-unit fee for a multifamily. Now remember, this isn't by connection, it's not by square feet, so if you're building, let's say you're building affordable housing at 700 to 800 square feet, you're paying the same fee somebody who's building a three-bedroom, two-bath, 1,200, you know, square-foot apartment. And that is something that I've seen other municipalities adopt, is a connection fee or a square footage fee, or, I mean, you can't go by per-person, obviously, but, you know, some sort of scale there that kind of meets, meets the demand. Again, we're talking about affordable housing here, so, you know, it's going to be more in the two-bedroom range. So those are the considerations that I'd like to see. I didn't realize, again, the development agreement sounds interesting, it sounds like that's something down the road. I think this is something, you know, where you have an opportunity to lower some of these fees, incentivize us to build in a sense, or get us off the ground. Alvin, I thought you had a great idea last time of looking at some way of doing some sort of flat fees and lowering this, getting this even down further. I realize and I appreciate the fact that this is going to have effects on, you know, what's going on with sewers and grants and studies and everything else, but, you know, as John said, and as Scott said, I mean, timing kind of is the essence. I mean, we can't go back to the drawing board and do a new, new study. That is just, you know, budgets and everything else, that's going to cost the city more than it would to even just reduce our fees. And I think that's all I have, thank you for your time.
I have a question for you. You had mentioned that there's other cities that have done rates on, you know, square footage. Do you have any of those names of those cities or anything that that information could be just drawn from, as opposed to a study?
Sure, I'd have to, I'd have to pull that, but I know Bear Valley, for example, does it on connections. You know, just to give you an example, I mean, obviously that's Alpine County, but, yeah, I could pull some, potentially pull some others. I mean, I think it'd be interesting to bring some of that data to light.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have numbers, but the square footage does seem like it would possibly be an answer, or like you said, Alvin, you know, a flat fee, or, yeah. Try to keep it simple.
Can I just go with the legal challenge of this?
Simple now.
We're stuck until we change our rate structure.
Right.
And the way that we're done, you have to go, if you want to change it to a square-foot basis, you have to legally go back and change the entire thing.
Okay.
That's why I kind of went to the development agreement, because it allows you to kind of like, create, you know, alternative paths, but even a development agreement, you're looking at two, three months to get past. Because it's considered in the ordinance, and you've got to have public noticing, two hearings in 30 days until it's effective. So, I mean, I don't, I mean, I'm talking about just real-life legal constraints, I mean, I'm not.
Right, yeah, right.
So is there any sort of, I buy one house and it's $50,000 hookup. I buy 10 houses and it's $40,000 hookups. I buy 30 houses and it's $20,000. I buy 100, is there, I mean, the rest of the world works out in quantity, the more quantity I buy, the cheaper prices go.
Economies is good.
This is all new to me, I've kind of learned in here.
I like it.
I'm just asking.
I like where you're going.
Because he is, these guys are bringing tax dollars, sales tax, property tax.
We're bringing workforce housing, I mean, that's.
And I don't want to lose these guys, I'm just trying to think of ways.
So let me go over how the system actually works.
Yeah, I got to do it.
Okay, so, we set a fee, right? The fee cost for, to build out this capacity, that goes into what was, you know, what people pay to connect to it. To use the capacity, I'm oversimplifying it a little bit, to use the capacity, that goes into your monthly charges, all right? So, the cost to build that capacity is fixed, right? So, when you have 100 extra units that take up capacity, that capacity is now gone, right? And that makes the people who come in afterwards have to pay more, right? And so you have to recalculate it, right? And you have to jack up the, not jack it, that's not the right word, you have to increase, you have to increase the, basically, connection fee for the developers who come afterwards, because, again, we're not, we're more than partially built out, right? And if you don't do that, then you come in at a deficit, right? And you don't have enough money to cover the construction of the cost of that, of that thing. That's what we're really talking about here now. Now, how you set your rate structure, whether it's on a square-foot basis, or if it's on a type-of-use basis, you know, I can tell you that the tiny home concept for affordable housing is very, very popular right now in a lot of communities. And, city fees candidly aren't set up to accommodate those. That being said, I have to deal with the constraints of the structure in which the city currently has until we change that, or until we do a one-off agreement that allows me to work around that. And that's why I was talking about some of the legal challenges. To go, to take a dollar away, always raises the question, because your connection fees are supposed to be based off of actual cost.
Right.
So, when you go beyond taking that fee down, for whatever altruistic purpose it is, you have to then, you run into legal requirements of having to do studies to make sure that you don't come up with shortfalls. That's where some of the stuff comes in. It's not necessarily a classic environmental review SEQA study, it's more like when we look at these fee rate studies, it's more in the lines with that.
So these fees that we have now do not demand to have that study, but if we go lower, there would be the studies that we would be facing.
So if I heard Amy correct, and she can yell at me if I'm wrong.
She's going to.
Yeah. There's enough money, what we identified is what we could, the maximum that we could reduce without triggering fee studies to recalculate based off of the breadth of this grant, how much more, how much we would have to increase our fees for incoming new developers.
Yeah.
The part I'm struggling with, Doug, is that the use of the word capacity, because the capacity is there.
Yeah.
Based on, you know, call it the foresight of our forefathers.
Yep.
That built it to a certain.
Yep.
Capacity, and it's not in jeopardy.
Nope.
Right?
Nope.
So, that's the part I'm struggling with. Why that, if you're building to capacity, and you've got room, waiving the fees, I'm not sure how that affects future capacity.
You've got room in your house.
If it's not a direct relationship in my mind.
You've got room in the house, but the question is, do you have enough money to pay the mortgage? Right? So, you have to make sure that you're bringing enough money in to be able to pay the mortgage. It doesn't matter whether or not there's enough room in the house to fit all the people. I mean, that's kind of a, I'm trying to come up with the best analogies I can.
Yeah, I would argue that the rates they pay, monthly rates they pay, we pay the mortgage.
But understand, they're not allowed to go to that. Rates are only allowed to go to operational use.
Not capacity.
Not to the creation of capacity.
Additional.
Or the building of a new plant. You can't pay, you can't pass off to existing rate payers legally, the cost of creating capacity that they don't use. So you can't go to your existing folks and say, we're going to make you pay more on a monthly basis in order for us to have affordable housing. All they can pay for is, this is how much, you know, what I use on a regular basis cost from an operational standpoint. And you can take in the replacement value of it. So let's say that the city occupies 80% of its capacity, and you're going to have to build a new wastewater treatment plant. You can have rate payers pay their 80% of a new wastewater treatment plant, but you can't make them pay for 100%. And so what we're talking about here is what it actually takes for the construction of the extra capacity that would otherwise go to new folks who would come in and who would be required to pay that. And that's the mortgage.
So, if we voted on passing this, then can you still have agreements with developers for anything else than this?
Yeah, I mean, it just has to go through the process, and again, it will trigger studies, you know, because you have to recalculate your structures.
I see, even with the developer?
Even with the development agreement, we would still have to say, okay, so for instance, the impact on funding sources for the capacity that currently exists there would be, would be less if it was less units, right? And so it would then cause the connection fee for new development to not be as high, right? So the more units that we put into this, the more likely it is that connection fees for new development on a going-forward basis would go up. I mean, this, I mean, this is a great project, I mean, I want to be very careful, I'm not trying to say anything until it's a project, I'm going through the legal framework we have to work through.
So, what about the general plan moratorium that we have on ourselves for capacity? Because we, because the last conversation we had, it was brought up in this conversation, the capacity for like the solids, we're having issues with the solid capacity. So, I'm confused as to, because I got interjected in this conversation last time, too.
Okay, so that particular moratorium, which, we won't even use that word, basically, that's a delivery issue. We have plenty of capacity at the plant, we can't get it to the plant, it's a delivery issue. So it's, it's two different things, yeah.
So then what about the capacity storage that we were talking about?
That's fine.
But we just had it in our budget that we needed to expand that capacity. So I am confused.
Yeah, that's all stuff. Costs of more coming into your plant, so, yeah, we have some.
On the sewer?
Projects, yeah, that are.
Yeah, you have 100,000 dollar projects that we're asking to pay for because we don't have enough storage for, we don't have enough capacity for storage of it.
Yeah, so we're, we don't.
Capital? Those are all capital projects?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, really, the options here tonight are to move forward with this as written, or, option B is what?
Go back to the, to the board and come back with something different which would trigger us to need to do basically a study. I mean, even if we did the development agreement, there'd be a study and then there'd be agreement, or there'd be, there'd be a study and then we would come back if we go less than this. It would be my recommendation that you at least pass this for tonight, since we think that we can support it. And then use it as an opportunity to see if there's, you know, we can do better.
And, just as an example, so, the reduction for the sewer is not based upon getting a grant. That's just going to happen. The reduced traffic impact mitigation fees, not in any way related to getting a grant. Only the water reduction is related to getting a grant. We have a high, high, high probability of getting a grant in the amount that we would need to make these water fees go down. And so we were able to make all of those arguments. Now, if somebody comes in and they decide that for some of the projects they want to have, they want to go with tiny houses, ha-ha, now I have something to work with. A tiny house, that's not going to have as big of an impact on the sewer system. I can make an argument, and I have something to work with that's specific in a development agreement to further lower the fees. I can't do that at this scale. I have to actually have a. I have to actually have a project in my hands in order to start doing that kind of negotiation or analysis. Otherwise, we'd need to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars going through all of the what-ifs, and that will take a long period of time. What we're trying to do here is take a first step.
Alright.
Without spending an enormous amount of time or money.
Great.
Is there any other public comment?
I could probably ask this of Amy later, but, I mean, just, as you say, making, you know, changing this for tiny housing, I mean, there's no difference between a tiny house and, say, an apartment, right? I mean, that is a tiny house.
Again, you feel it's specifics, and.
That's fine.
Some apartments, yes, some apartments.
I'm just asking for clarification.
Yeah. And it would have to, we would have to actually look at.
That's fine.
The specifics.
But there is an option.
There is, sure.
Okay.
Once we know details, we can get more details.
So, so let me be very specific. The difference comes from the way our municipal code is drafted, right? I understand that functionally, there's a difference between a, 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 a home that's like 1,200 square feet and a tiny home that might be 500. I understand the practical thing. Our code, as it's currently written, doesn't differentiate between the two. And I'm stuck with our code until such time as it's changed.
Right.
So, that's my predicament.
Yeah, we're just trying to navigate here, I mean, as, as John and Scott have said, it's, you know, time is of the essence, so how do we navigate? How can we work with you? I mean, and we're all kind of in this together, which is great, but, you know, we need to figure this out.
So if we pass this tonight, does this give you some groundwork to go forward with whatever next avenue that would be, whether that be development agreement with the individuals in the room and the future, or?
Yes.
And that is what staff need to further the negotiations with the, if needed, in the, with certain projects?
Yes, and there are multiple projects that the city is undertaking, all of which will help us go in that direction. They're just not all done yet, but they've all started. And so, we're going in the right direction. This will take us a really big step in the right direction, because right now, we're at 100% fees for affordable housing. This would cut them roughly in half, so that's a good step in the right direction. Can we go further? Yes. Right, right at this very moment? No.
I think the practical question that you want to ask, and I think it's appropriate since you have some of the interested parties here today, is if you pass this, is this substantial enough such that whatever options they have on land or not, that they feel comfortable at least holding those for a little bit longer to engage with the city? In other words, do, do they have a project under this fee structure? Because if the answer is no, then I'd almost say, let's take a step back, do the study, and figure out what really is the best that we can do, because we don't have a project without it anyway.
Well, but then that adds this element of time to it, which is, you know, months.
No, but I'm saying if their projects are dead anyway, effectively, because this doesn't go far enough.
Yeah, if we pass this and.
But if we, the development agreements still require further stay.
Yeah.
Correct.
But it does give us the opportunity to move ahead, and not take such a long time.
But if we do go that route, are we, are they still, is it?
I think that's a, Doug is saying.
That's what I'm saying, that's the key question.
They have projects.
Anybody want to go on record with that kind of statement?
So if we do the fee cut to 50%, roughly.
Where we're at now.
Where we're at now, 50% for you, and then you have, that, he's saying that, I'm not an attorney, the man's here. So, three, two, three months where you could do your own negation, negotiations, Scott could do his own, is that in your ballpark of?
Well, I think we're a lot closer. I don't think it's gonna work quite yet, but, but I haven't done a huge amount of footwork running the numbers, because we just, we just landed on them now.
Right.
I mean, if, if there's, so you're saying proposing where we're at now, and then it would be an individual development structure with.
A development agreement, but I'm getting it.
Yeah.
But it may take two or three more months.
But we still have to do the studies for each three of those, so if we take a step back, do one study for everybody.
Yeah, which is.
Come back to a reduced of what the numbers are here, would you guys be okay with that?
I think the question.
Because either way, you're gonna be stuck doing the study, whether we pull this back in.
Right, either way. Either it's individual studies or it's a group study.
Right.
So I think the group study's probably better for everybody, as long as it doesn't drag out and out and out and out and out, you know?
I think the question is, is there enough here that it merits?
Yeah, I think we've, we've done leaps and bounds. I mean, it was nowhere even reasonable, you know, two weeks ago. So I, I think, I think we've got it a lot closer, and I'm, you know, I'm not ready to bail yet, as long as we can still keep working towards a general position.
So then it would be staff's recommendation.
That's how I feel about it.
As presented.
And then we could do the three of them as a group study together, pass this, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, after what I asked this.
Yep. Yeah, the next step would be.
I'm okay with that.
The next step after this, if, if this, if this goes through, the next step would be to get an idea particularly from Scott, because I think yours is the one that's, because yours is very low as opposed to low.
Correct.
So yours might be a little bit harder to, to get to. I think the question is, um, getting exact counts from them, and then running that in a model against, you know, our existing, uh, capacity charge, and then coming up with what, what that would require as, as a fee to accomplish this, and giving you two or three options, because you make, I mean, it may be that you're willing to go there on some of it, but not all of it, or you're willing to go, there's a couple of different ways to, to slice this.
I think I, the way I asked the question that, I was, and, when I asked you that, I was thinking, we pull back, do a complete study on this, not do individual, not do them as a group.
Well, I think even with the development agreements, it's a complete study.
Yeah.
And then, just so we know, that will take staff time, and I'm talking months.
No, it's probably, probably it's got to source it to engineering.
So, I mean, it's going to take time.
When you say months, are you talking two, three, or are you saying?
Well, look how long it took us for the rate study. I mean, we're talking our capacity study and, yeah.
But you're saying to pass this as is, but then we'd still take months to work out with the group?
I don't know. So it may be that once we get the study that comes back, it may be that we can set a, we can, we can do what's here and present it as a fee instead of a development agreement, which will speed time. I, I mean, the, I think the key is, and then we're gonna have to have some individual conversations, because, let me just use Scott, because I know him better, as, as an example. It may be that Scott would rather have 100% off on 50 homes, rather than have a $5,000 fee across 100. Just, and I'm just using, maybe I'm off on stuff. Those are some of the things that we have to talk about in order to figure out how this is gonna work, because that tabulates differently, even though it's the same amount of dollars.
Right.
Yeah, I was thinking that, because we have these numbers on extremely low, very low and low income, you know, the numbers that are required, 29, 28, 42, um, and, you know, do we, I, I don't know, it's, it's, it says it's required, but do we, it's from 2019 to 2027, and is there a way to, you know, not do 29 homes in the extremely low? Or do you have to build all 29, like, as an individual project, as about what Habitat is seeing it as? Is there a possibility of doing, you know, 15 now, and, you know? I don't, I don't know the way that.
Yeah, and we don't know the answer to that question yet. What I'm, my, my concept right now is to, uh, put those 29 units into one building, create a condominium.
Oh, okay.
And so that would be hard to phase that.
Right.
But if we did something like tiny houses or something different, then, you know, again, we're open, but, so, so, um, if, without, without the, the fees going to zero on the extremely low, it definitely jeopardizes those 29 homes.
Right.
No question about it. We would rather build, same number of units, we'll do 29 of the, of the moderate. Um, I, I do have a couple of questions. One is about the water, uh, the grant needed for the water, uh, fee reduction. I understand it's very, very probable that we'll get that grant, but is that in perpetuity? Or is that just for a year or two? Because it is a grant, so how, how long does that last?
These proposed fee reductions only count for our current regional housing needs assessment, only count for 137 units. There is a cap on it, and it only goes through 2027's allocation. So that's, that particular cap. As far as the million, it's a dollar-for-dollar offset on fees. So basically, we have a million dollars to play with if we get a million dollars worth of grant on the water, so we're gonna cut down that by a million dollars.
And that's limited to just the 137?
Just, just to those 137 units, and just to affordable housing. And that's as per our general plan. That's actually what our general plan states we'll do.
Okay, so, based off this conversation, we keep going back and forth around and around. Okay, at this point, what is staff's recommendation that we propose?
Yeah.
The, the two, we need to.
Yeah, so I, I support Doug that we go with staff's recommendation as presented in the memo, and that we don't go any further until we have a study that could justify going further. So I recommend you support staff's recommendation in the report.
And then from there, they can individually, with their time restrictions.
And then additional.
Further negotiate.
Yeah, and then additional.
I don't know that legally we can go further. That's, that's an underlying issue here, what I'm trying to nicely say, you know?
No, given those, given the position that the city has within their ordinances, codes, legal requirements, this is the best we can do, and then from there, individual negotiations.
Or we can do a big negotiation.
Or a big one, yeah.
But that can be then after this.
Once we complete the study, then we move forward with an update, comprehensive update.
And I will remind you that in the resolution, it does adopt a policy for the council that in any future study we do, including the upcoming capital study for what those actual connection fees are, that we will include an analysis built in for affordable housing. So, this basically puts you on record as saying, no, we're gonna look at having lower fees for affordable housing, so.
Amy, just, just because I think it's worth the council hearing, and for the public hearing, do we have, do we currently, for new development, have an affordable housing fee?
No.
That's to answer one of the questions of where you're concerned.
Yeah, nice question, okay. What then we need to, okay. 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 Any further discussion?
I promise, I'm not talking about housing. Enough said, and agree with a lot of discussion, and good to see the discussion. I do want to make comment in regards to, as a follow-up to our budget meetings we had in June, that on the business license fees, we had a chance to meet with Emily, both from ACFA and DAC, and had a good working discussion in regards to the fees, and are supportive of the renewal fee of $65, and thank staff, et cetera, for the work on that. We will be taking that announcement out to our association members and such, and talking about what this means going forward. The second item I want to make mention of on the master fee schedule, I want to thank staff for the removal of the special event fees that were noted in there. If those fees were imposed, it was a, a big hit to our special events and possibly knocking events out in our city. So having those fees removed is very much appreciated, and we thank you for that.
Any other comment? Is there a motion to, to, um, support staff's recommendation and the study, right?
No.
So how do we do that?
The study we're gonna have to bring back, because we have to go out and get, uh, we have to find out how much it's gonna cost first, and then we have to bring it back to council for approval. So that can be done probably next, next week. But that wouldn't be part of the motion, other than, other than telling us to.
Okay.
Go get you a budget.
So we would just need to close public hearing on the item if there's no more public comments.
Okay. Any other further comment before I close the public hearing? Okay. Back to the motion. Do we want his?
I move that we adopt Resolution 19-17, adoption, fee reduction and waiver provisions for affordable housing as recommended by staff and supported with the.
We have three resolutions included in that motion.
Yeah, so do we want, we need to do these individually. So the first one is 19.
Yeah, 1915.
Yeah, let's do them individual, because we're gonna do roll call for vote.
And, and I just want to ask on 17, if you're gonna include the provision for, that we mentioned at the beginning of the hearing, to include specific plans.
Yeah, to include the amendment, which Amy recommended, you can just do that.
Okay, so let's start with the first one, Resolution 1915, updating business license fees. Is there a motion to approve 1915?
I move to approve 1915.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Five oh. Item two, Resolution 1916, adopting the master fee schedule. Is there a motion to approve that?
Second.
Second. Joe seconding. All in favor?
Aye.
Five oh. And our favorite? Resolution 1917, fee reduction and waiver provision for affordable housing.
Including the amendment.
Including.
Including the amendment.
Yeah.
Is there a motion?
I'll move for that.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Five oh, what?
Oh, yeah. I lose control of my voice.
So five oh on that as well, and then we will go forward with that? Go forward with that?
Yep, so, yep, so it's, it's a resolution, so it immediately goes into effect, um, and then we will bring you back a budget for what it would cost to do the study, this one's just gonna be done.
We're gonna do this.
And the time.
And the timeframe, okay. Okay.
Oh, and Joe, didn't you ask for C to be approved?
And Melissa, from Melissa.
You guys already passed a motion for item B, C to be taken first in order?
Oh, I misplaced it.
So it takes C before B?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you all for coming here tonight and having the dialogue with us. I know this isn't easy for anyone. So, okay, moving on. Next agenda is C, which is a letter of commitment to participate in a grant application with the Utica Water and Power Authority for multi-jurisdiction, local control, or local hazard mitigation plan. Melissa?
So if Karen doesn't mind, maybe come up and telling the council about the grant opportunity that she has available through UWPA, and the invitation to the member agencies to participate. So Karen, if you have a second?
Thank you, Melissa. Karen Rojas, Center General Manager, Utica Water and Power Authority. Several months ago, we filed for a notice of intention to apply, to get a grant for a local hazard mitigation plan. Basically, we, it's to develop a plan. After you have a plan developed, of course, then it allows you to apply for pre-disaster funding for, through FEMA. We don't even have a plan. In some of our collaboration meetings that we have been holding for the Highway 4 corridor, we came to somewhat of a consensus that perhaps as a, because we are a JPA with UPUD and City of Angels, that it could be appropriate that, rather than, well, first of all, we got approved for the notice of intention, so we're in the queue for the grant, that we change it from a single jurisdictional, and that the City of Angels and UPUD could join us in an application, a multi-jurisdictional application, sub-application with CalOES. We've attended some training meetings, the application is due by July 5th. We, as UWPA, would sign a letter of, of matching funds. The original intent was about 60,000, perhaps, that was a quote, for, to prepare a single jurisdictional, and it's a 25% match, so we were budgeting about 15,000 or thinking that. The price would probably increase, or the cost would rather increase, maybe to somewhere around 100, possibly 120, if we were going to do the three agencies together. And the 30, excuse me, the 25% match then would be about 30,000. At the collaboration meetings, we discussed the possibility that perhaps the three of us could each contribute. meetings, we discussed the possibility that perhaps the three of us could each contribute $10,000. What this would do is allow us to get a grant to go out for bid and hire a consultant to prepare a local hazard mitigation plan, to develop a plan that we do not, that does not exist. It would be more specific to water and wastewater in the Highway 4 corridor. I know the county has one, and some of the smaller agencies go under the umbrella of the county. But because of our uniqueness of water and wastewater, we thought that it might be better that we develop a plan, perhaps containing some emergency response programs as well within it. Cal OES is quite willing to help us work out the details of the sub-application once we submit on July 5, before it goes to FEMA. We're going to have a resolution at our next board meeting seeking, or authorizing UWPA to submit it, but we do need a letter of commitment asking for a third of that possible $30,000. And that's why I think that Melissa has put it ahead of the budget. So that's where we are right now. We are grateful that you got it in on the agenda prior to the next meeting because we want to deliver it by, prior to July 4, the holiday. I don't know if you understand the local hazard mitigation plan. It will prove beneficial if we can go forward with it, but we need to go ahead and get this grant sub-application in so we can move to the next step. It would require possibly after that, if we get approved, time, more staff time, unique to the city, UPUD, that UWPA can't provide. We would need input, it would require probably some public outreach, stakeholder meetings and things like that. But the consultant would handle all of that, and that's what these funds would be for, would be to hire the consultant so that we can develop the plan that we've never had before in this area on the Highway 4. I don't know what kinds of questions you might have in regard to that.
Are there any council questions?
None here.
Is there any public comment, question? Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move to sign the letter of commitment to participate in the grant application with UWPA.
I'll second.
To that letter. All in favor?
Aye.
Five oh. Thank you, Karen. Okay. Back to item B, public hearing, adoption Resolution 1919 for the 2019, 2020 fiscal year budget. Emily?
Hello. So after our budget hearing, we had a few changes to our draft budget. I had summarized in my report. And as an attachment, I have included the supplemental request summary that shows all of those items that we discussed, along with, there's a notes column in there, and new estimated ending cash balances. Let me know if you have any questions. I believe we did have that item before this, so that we could discuss the funding to get into the budget. One thing that council directed was to replenish the UWPA Emergency Reserve Fund. We're required to have a $250,000 balance. There's currently about $20,000 existing. So we would have, it's, so my estimated ending balance would be about $291,000 at the end of next year. So we would have some room in there to use some of that funding for the grant. So I would recommend that modification for the UWPA budget. Do you have any questions?
Looks like everything we agreed to, the workshops.
Yeah, everything decided. Good.
So, do you want me to go into the other items in it, or do you want to address one of the items at a time?
Let's do one at a time. So it doesn't get confusing like last time. We should have done that last one. My apologies. Okay. Let's focus on this one. Is there any public comment on this particular item? Yep. Okay. Is there a motion to approve? What number is this?
1919.
1919. Yep. I'll move approval of Resolution 1919.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Five. Okay. Number two.
So I'm going to talk about the GAN limit next. And so I've calculated the GAN limit as $3,533,992. The applicable appropriations in the presented budget are underneath that. I do have a note, we have a recent sales tax measure that includes increasing of the GAN limit by the amount of tax received, because that is yet to have been determined, and we're able to retroactively increase it. Staff plans on increasing it next year once we have the amount of taxes known. And we are still underneath the limit at this point. So.
Any council question, comment?
None here.
Public comment?
I'm sorry.
Okay. Back. Is there a motion to approve number two?
It's actually number one, Resolution 1918.
Number one, sorry.
I'll make a motion for 1918.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Five oh. Okay. Now, number two.
Okay. Number three is a personnel action. This was discussed in budget, and you have a staff report in front of you that recommends the approval of a personnel action to increase the salary of the city's fire chief, John Rorbaugh, from $31.50 per hour to $42 per hour. Additionally, staff recommends that any Cal Fire admin surcharge received for the reimbursement of strike team deployments, lest the city's portion of FICA and Medicare taxes be paid to Chief Rorbaugh through a supplemental payroll disbursement. The financial impact for the salary increase would be $12,554 next year, and the surcharge reimbursement that's paid to him would have a fairly close to neutral cost.
Nothing changed when we went over that.
And it's been approved in budget. This is just, we want to bring every personnel action to the council so that we have a record of the decisions.
Any other council question? Any public comment? Is there a motion?
I'll move. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, can we go back to Resolution 1919? I think that in the motion, we do need whether you're going to increase the appropriations by the $10,000 to include that in the UWPA in the motion.
Yeah, the amendment. Okay.
So we do need to say that, and then the resolution would have to be, the total appropriations amount would need to be increased by $10,000.
So I can?
So somebody who voted, we would ask that somebody who voted in the affirmative, which is I think everybody, make a motion for re.
Amending.
Reopen 1919. To reopen 19 for amendment. It's not the typical.
I'll move that we reopen Resolution 1919 for the amendment that we need to add to it.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. 1919 is back open for a public hearing.
And so, Emily, you want reinstatement of the old motion with the addition of $10,000 for?
Yes, please. For the UWPA grant.
So we'd be looking for council to, we've already had public comment on it. This has been presented back in council.
So we move again?
So then close it or?
It's already, public's already had opportunities, but it's a council.
Okay. So back to a motion for, is there a motion to add this amendment at the UWPA?
I'll move to approve 1919 as amended for the $10,000 increase for UWPA.
Is there a second?
Grant.
Second.
There you go.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you.
Good catch.
Yep, that's good.
Okay. Back to number three, right? That's where we're on?
Yep.
Okay. Approval of the reclassification of the engineer technician two to assistant engineer.
Staff recommends approval of this new position, assistant engineer, and the adoption of the revised miscellaneous salary schedule, placing the new position on a schedule with a range of $30.16 to $36.66, and the promotion of Kevin Silva, engineer tech two, to the position of assistant engineer. It's recommended that Mr. Silva be placed at Step A effective July 1, 2019.
Is there any further council comment or question on this?
This also was approved in budget.
Is there any further public comment?
Just to say that Kevin has been outstanding stepping up since his predecessor left, and he's been a pleasure to work with, and he has more than fulfilled his position. So I highly recommend that you approve this.
Okay. With that, I'll bring it back to the council. Is there a motion to approve?
Can we get public comment on it?
I just.
Oh, I'm sorry. It didn't register with me because it was staff.
Gotcha. Sorry. Yeah. No more public comment, right? Okay. We're good.
Thanks, sorry.
Okay. So we got a motion on the table?
We have a motion.
We need a motion.
We need a motion. Do a motion.
So.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alvin, okay. Five oh.
We're getting a little busy.
Okay.
Okay, so.
And then next is item D, review of proposed water rate increase initiating the proceeding of the rate approval with Part 218. Melissa?
Oh, yes. So we wanted to give council an update. We have a draft of the notice to property owners available for your review. We plan to have that information postmarked and out to property owners on Monday, the 24th. The hearing is planned for August 8 at the High School Multipurpose Room. And so the details are provided in that notice. And then the rates as discussed and previously reviewed by you are included in there as well. So happy to take any questions that the council may have. And the notice has been approved by legal counsel. We are currently undergoing legal review of the draft rate study. The rate study will also be made available for public review at the same time the notices are distributed on Monday, the 24th.
So the 45 days starts on August 8?
No, it ends on?
It ends on the 8. So the date of the hearing.
Okay.
Oh, is it May?
Just to clarify, because I misstated it, it's going to be an independent billing. It won't be in the utility bill.
It's not in the bill?
Yeah.
But around, but when is it going out?
Monday.
And when is the meeting at the multipurpose room?
It'll be August 8.
August 8, six p.m.
At 6 p.m.
We have copies of the draft notice. They're available there, and they're currently underway to be mailed.
Can I offer a comment or suggestion, whatever you want to take on this? Can we bold the August 8 date? Is that something that we can do? Just to make it pop out? Just for me reading it. I'm looking for dates, and it just makes it stand out a little bit more.
So the recommendation is to bold August 8, right here.
On the back. So it doesn't just blend in.
It's on the front too, isn't it?
Yeah, it's on the front.
Yeah, right here.
First thing, here, date, time.
But just a repetitiveness of it.
So.
It's not, that is okay.
Right.
It's already been printed, isn't it?
Never mind.
I'm assuming.
No, it's fine. I just, when you said this was a draft, I assumed nothing had been printed.
It's okay.
It's okay. Don't worry about it.
Amanda's going to get a highlighter.
Come on over and bring some highlighters. Don't you color highlighters?
No, it's okay. No.
Second thought.
Don't laugh.
Sometimes it takes quite a while.
Two thousand.
No big deal.
You're going to have a stuffing party.
Yeah.
We could, Amanda could be there.
Okay, August.
Okay. Well, otherwise it looks good. Good job, Jackson. All right.
Hanging on.
Okay. And you don't need a motion. That was just informational, right?
Yes.
Okay. Next is council.
Oh, can I, I'm sorry, can I make a comment about the previous item?
Yeah.
Can you bring in your budget binders to City Hall so I can replace the?
Yeah, mine's.
It's all yours, so I just wanted to make a note for the rest of council. Give it to City Hall. Thank you.
Okay. Item A, council report. I will start through my last member, Maitori.
Went to Farmer's Market on Friday. I believe it was kids' night, because there were a ton of kids. It was actually really well received, so it was really nice. And again, I always tell people, no matter how hot it is out in the sunshine, go down to the park. It's less, less heat, little shade, little music, little breeze. So support your park. Support your community. That's all I got.
Well, let's see. I think I'll just mention that the downtown merchants are going to have a beginning of the third Saturday event, like every third Saturday, supposed to be year-round, where there'll be music, entertainment, maybe bingo, who knows, but things to bring people downtown, wine, beer. And certain merchants will have different entertainment going on, and the other shops will stay open and starting on August 17, August 17, at 5 o'clock until dusk or whenever. So should be a good place to come. Think of August 17, save the date, and go downtown. I'm done.
Vice mayor?
No report.
Today, we had the PGE Power outage emergency service meeting with fire and police and Kellerus County. It was good. There's a lot of stuff to be done, but there's a lot of, city I think is pretty well prepared. Moving in that direction to get prepared. Water and sewer, there, I think some fuel needs, I think they're good to go. So.
So with that, we are working with each department head, and they are preparing information that they'll submit to me on terms of their capacities to sustain prolonged power outage, their needs, and ways that we can kind of mitigate those needs. We're working with County OES. We'll be working with our PIO, Public Information Officer that we have with the city. And Nathan, our fire marshal, and I will be meeting with her tomorrow so we can start developing some community messages around those public safety power shut-off notices that will be coming from PGE. And hopefully, we can prepare our community well in advance so that it eliminates some demand and some need on our first responders and our systems as a city. So it's kind of our goal right now, and we are actively looking to prepare our facilities in terms of generators and fuel. So we'll start giving you guys more updates, maybe make that an agenda item so that you know how we're preparing as we move forward. But it's a big deal.
It is. Very big deal.
It's a big deal.
It's a crazy deal.
I think one of the other things too, this would be a surprise for Debbie, but I do want to start reaching out to Debbie to also talk to.
I do want to start reaching out to Debbie to also talk to our businesses, our business community, to see how many of them are prepared, and how many of them may have generators, especially some of our gas stations would be good to know.
How's that? I did COG and Calaveras Transit, but you could do that one.
Okay. We had COG and CTA, Calaveras Transit, last week.
Two weeks ago.
Yeah, two weeks ago. We passed a fiscal year 1920 budget. We are going into a lease agreement with CTA, the Calaveras Transit Authority, on the building, which, which will help us with RFP for the future with any contractors that come in to run the transit, the transit in the county. Without that lease, it makes it difficult for anyone to try and put their bid on an RFP for that. So that's a good thing. And we got Cal Transit update. There were multiple updates from Cal Transit. Some of the key ones were pit for a road intersection and how to mitigate some of those issues that are happening there with car crashes and lighting. The other one was, oh my gosh, I'm going to blank.
The Crown in San Andreas.
Yes, thank you. And there were, there were multiple areas across the county that we asked Cal Transit to give us updates on where they are at with that. We also approved a list of county roads that will be going through for repavement. And there's a, there's a list of, of roads that-
From worst, yeah.
Yep. And how many miles. So there was an amendment to add more county roads to that, to that. I think that's it. Yeah. Last week, I attended the last of the Environmental Quality Meeting of the Year for the League of California Cities. Hot topic, Melissa talked about the emergency preparedness. That was a huge topic. We had Cal OESTA, and the biggest thing that came up was communication. What do you do when the towers go down? You're back to old-fashioned communication, meaning radios. One, I know in the last meeting, we had talked about the old siren in town that actually came up as an option to alert citizens in some communities. They need to pay attention and get to the safety location of their respective jurisdiction. We went over iPods and different communication, emergency communication. We're fortunate that most of our staff in the city have gotten a lot of those trainings already to have a plan and know what, know what they need to do. Most cities didn't even know about just the basic emergency communication plans. So we are way ahead of the game. So Cal OES, it was pretty repetitive, but broke down what, an incident command, what happens in an emergency, who comes in. So there was a lot of basic surface education that was at that meeting for that. There was also talks. As a response, I think Alvin asked at our last meeting with the presentation to PG&E, or maybe it was you, I can't remember, is PG&E providing funding for local jurisdictions to get generators, to get all of these things? And with a surplus in the cap and trade, the state has put aside $75 million for local jurisdictions to apply for, to get some of those things. So that, we, we should probably look into that. I don't, there was no, they didn't really come out with a plan on how you apply to that, but the state has guaranteed $75 million in, for that. Now, where it goes, we all know how the state operates, but there could be a potential there. The other major bills that we talked about were AB 56, AB 1583, which had to do with electricity. This is more towards probably UWPA than it, but where is the future of electricity? The conversation of CCAs could possibly be the future of, of California, if PG&E and Edison cannot get capital to fund the, the operations, and the impact that that will have. And it's, just, we went into great detail about that. And the other one was the recycling market, which is AB 1583, and what does that look like with us not being able to ship out? Cal Recycled did approach this board to ask for a tax on cities, or to then potentially pass down to residents, to fund their program or their State Department. And this board went back and said, no, we don't want that idea. Come back with a different plan. It should be funded like any other State Department, and it shouldn't be passed down to the ratepayers. So there's a lot of discussion, because not getting that money with the recyclables, it's, everybody's looking for money right now. So it will be interesting to see, and we will, so, they just be prepared. A lot of stuff coming out. If the council is interested, I left Melissa with more things that cities are going to be seeing coming up in the, in this fall recess. And that is my report for that. That's a long one, I know. But I felt it was relevant, especially $75 million.
Yeah, thank you. It's better than what was recommended.
Walmart grant.
Okay. With that, is there a calendar?
Okay. Tomorrow at 9:00 a.m. is IRWMA at the TUD offices. And then in the afternoon at 4:00, here at the Firehouse, there is an open house to discuss curb, gutter, and sidewalk projects. Then the 20th, Thursday, 8:30 a.m. is DAX Board of Directors Meeting. There's also, at that same time, a museum commission meeting. And in the afternoon at 4:00, here at the Firehouse, a discussion of Phase 1 of the Angels Camp Trail.
Susan?
Yes.
Both of those are canceled.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
The 19 and 20 are open houses.
Okay. Farmer's Market's on Friday. The 25th, at 5:30, is UWPA. Again, we have Farmer's Market. And then we meet back here on the 2nd of July for council.
And with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're joined.
For UWPA? I'm out of-